Kind of changed the chairs a little bit, haven't we?
Maybe.
A little bit, maybe not. Well, I call this, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight. I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order, let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and to notice this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. Mr. Beavers, will you lead our invocation, please?
Absolutely. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and just this time that we could come in, Lord, and just talk about the matters before Prosper ISD this evening. And, Lord, as we head into a new year, Father, we just ask for your continued hand of blessing to be on Prosper ISD. Right now, as we have families out, Lord, as they're spending time together and just getting ready for this next year, we pray that you would bring everyone back to us safely, specifically students, parents, teachers. Lord, just give them a time of rest and relaxation and return them ready to go. Father, pray for the board right now, pray for wisdom and discernment as we look at the matters out here this evening. Thank you so much, and thank you for loving us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Open forum time. Five, six, seven, eight, okay. So I'm just... All right, I got these words I get to read before public comment. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to a school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you're encouraged to utilize the district grievance procedures provided in board policies FNG, GDBA, or GF Local. Please note that the board cannot comment on any item that is not on the board agenda for this meeting. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy BED Local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion to be designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussions or debate on matters being considered by the board unless requested by the presiding officer. When necessary for effective meeting management or accommodate large number of individuals wishing to address the board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allocated or allotted to each speaker. However, no individual shall be given less than one minute to make comments. So, as presiding officer of this meeting, I've set the overall time limit for public comment to thirty minutes. We have eight people signed up, so we will do three minutes each, which is our typical, we try to do a typical allotment there. And I think, okay. So finally, it is important to address the board's expectations and hopes for decorum during this public comment time. While the board certainly encourages members of our community to speak about any school governance or operations topic during public comment, and while we know that no one approaches the board, unless they care deeply and passionately about the matter they bring before us, we ask that each speaker conduct him or herself in a polite and civil way while addressing the board. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption to our public meeting, I'll be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Thank you in advance for observing these expectations, and the board of trustees truly appreciate your active participation in the school district. Our first speaker is Mr. James Pope. Come forward, Mr. Pope, please. Yeah, please keep on.
Hi, my name is James Pope. I am a resident here in Prosper on record. Thank you for allowing me this time. I first want to say thank you to the board as well as the district for continuing the live feed. We do appreciate that, a lot of people do. And also the agenda of 5E, which is interaction online, we do appreciate that. As a former law enforcement officer, one of the things that I always pride myself on is being perceived as a good person, honest, trustworthy. And perception nowadays is extremely important for a lot of reasons. I mean, when you look at the elections of 2016 and 18, and the mistrust that has occurred across the country, a lot of mending and healing needs to be done. And one of the things that I think is extremely important is interaction between people that are elected and those that elected them. And one of the things that I think is important is having an online interaction, just like we do here. As a father of two boys with autism, it's important to have that, and I'll tell you why. I've tried to come to two board meetings, and unfortunately, things popped up. And having two boys with autism makes it very difficult, so it's going to allow people like myself and others to listen in live and hopefully participate. I think we can mend some fences here, we continue to do that. I think there's a lot of things that we agree on and a lot of, and some things that we don't, but like Reagan says, eighty percent, if you agree with me eighty percent of the time, you are a friend of mine. If you disagree with me twenty percent of the time, does not make you my enemy. So I hope that you will consider this, and it would allow it to occur, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pope, I appreciate you coming up and speaking, thank you very much. Our next speaker would be Samantha Kim.
Good evening, my name is Samantha Kim, my address is in the record. I'm here tonight to speak on Agenda Item Number 5E, and am attending on behalf of Doc Charles, President of the newly-formed Prosper Citizen Group PAC, and as a board member of the PAC. We appreciate the opportunity to express the PAC's full support of the PISD board meetings being livestreamed and providing the ability for online public comments. Not only does the PAC support this, but residents and families of Prosper agree as well, as shown by four hundred and fifty-three online and two hundred and seventy-five paper signatures, for a total of seven hundred and twenty-eight received on the petition that was circulated by the PAC requesting livestreaming of PISD board meetings with the inclusion of online public comments. In today's technological environment with Zoom meetings and other teleconferencing common in the workplace and in schools, it seems incongruent that PISD board meetings would not be telecast live. Last Tuesday, Prosper Town staff recommended and Prosper Town Council approved to continue both in-person and live broadcasting and engagement. This allows both increased access and transparency of all Prosper Town Council and Commission meetings. To affirm their approval, Prosper Town Council also approved upgrading the technology to improve the online storage, broadcasting, and virtual participation. This is the model that this board should try to follow as well. While in-person meetings are ideal, virtual participation provides another way for parent engagement, especially when attending in person may not be possible due to work schedules, travels, sick children at home. Even the PISD student handbook states that children succeed with a strong partnership between home and school and encourages parent involvement by attending PISD board meetings. What better way to encourage parents than to provide multiple ways to engage and participate? In closing, we challenge the board not to allow fear of the unknown, limit parent participation and wider reach of the PISD board meetings. The board will have the same, if not more, controls over any rogue or inappropriate comments that go against the decency, respect, and decorum expected as you do with an in-person participant. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we hope to see a productive discussion during the Agenda Item and approval to restore online live broadcasting with the inclusion to participate virtually as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kim, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Jim Herbland.
Good evening, my name is Jim Herbland, I'm thirty-seven ninety-seven Bridle Bend. And first of all, I just wanted to thank you guys for getting this thing on the agenda tonight, I think that was a big step for you. And then number two, I don't want to be too redundant, but I can't think of any reason why you can't do the participation piece of this. And with everything going on in the political world today, I just think it's a great idea to make sure that not only we have the live streaming, but we have active participation at the same time. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Herbland. Emily Cochran.
My name is Emily Cochran, and I live at seven forty-one Salt Lake Court. As I was preparing for this meeting, as I prepare for all the meetings, I was reviewing the agenda provided. Agenda Item 6D caught my attention, and I thought it would be helpful to share it as an example of an area of opportunity for the board and the community to better engage. In reading the agenda, you can't really tell what Agenda Item 6D is about. And obviously, we haven't heard the discussion yet. What I do see in looking at the agenda is the existing policy in regards to public participation at board meetings, and a note of a plan change, but no explanation as to what the plan change is. With little detail provided there, there's only a few things I could do with this. I can assume things about what's proposed, could email the board, address on the site, and seeking more information, or I could come and listen in a reactionary state. This is a great example of a way we can be more collaborative to foster a better back-and-forth between the board and the community. I imagine there are some in this room who may think that I should just reach out. Now, while that may work, it's not really a sustainable solution for our district's growth. Handling things went off could lead to miscommunication or potentially a feeling of lack of transparency. I'm here to listen to what changes are being proposed, and I would ask that during the discussion today, this board also consider how those changes could impact community involvement and consider what else might need to evolve in tandem. For example, we could put more detail about the proposed change in the agenda, and it would help set proper expectations for those wanting to stay involved. We've heard a lot about needing to find more productive ways to work together, no one wants an adversarial relationship. I hope that the board will consider that during the discussion today, and I hope this was a helpful example of how we can strengthen our partnership.
Thank you, Mrs. Cochran. Peter Mayger, am I saying that right?
So we just moved here a couple of months ago, excited to be down here. Leaving Washington State and some of the craziness that's been going on there. I just wanted to, we're happy to be here, and I hope some of that stuff doesn't follow down here. You guys at least let us talk about it, and not just pass stuff that indoctrinates and destroys, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayger.
Welcome.
Yeah, and welcome, welcome to Prosper. Chris Gordon.
Good evening, Board of Directors, how are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you.
Thank you, I just want to take a moment, thank you for your service. As an elected official, I know it's not always easy, and delivering news, good or bad, sometimes you always have to be careful. I've been on city council in Dent County for sixteen years, so I understand your seat. I'm here tonight just to represent myself as the Sales Manager for MCA Crosspoint Communications. In 2019, we worked on an RFP to assist the school district with BDAs, Bidirectional Amplifiers for Public Safety Communication in eight of your existing buildings. We came back in 2020, I guess in twenty, in 2019, when that, when we presented that RFP, you had bond funding for existing building, I'm sorry, for new buildings, but not for existing, so it got put back out for RFP. We responded, did the sidewalk with Kelly Lewis, and I flew in my lead engineer from Arizona tonight just to make sure that if you had any questions, we would be available to assist you with it. Found out a few hours ago from Kelly that it was taken off of the agenda. Certainly understand how things change and we all pivot. But that being said, just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we've done the last sixteen bidirectional amplifiers, all of the BDAs that are in your existing schools through Pope Construction, and we look forward to growing that relationship. We'll be happy to return on the twenty-fourth if you need us.
Wonderful, thank you, appreciate you coming up, thank you, sir. Lacey Wheeler.
My name is Lacey Wheeler, my address is a matter of public record, and I am here to talk about 6D, which is your changes to the board policy per BED Local, specifically the public participation. I just have a question at the end of this. Twice in the past year, our public comments have been censored, the sound on the live streaming was cut. Why? Because this board didn't want the people at home to hear anything that might reflect badly on their members or their shady roundabout way of doing things. The lack of transparency on the agenda per PISD website doesn't tell me what changes these are that you guys are planning to make, but I'm sure it has something to do with the fact that you want to still continue editing and censoring things. So I just want to know what the next step is going to be as far as your transparency. You keep talking about this involvement, that you guys are wanting to get parents more involved, that you're wanting more of a co-partnership, and we would love to be in on that with y'all, but when you guys do things like post the agenda, but then don't tell us what it is that you're talking about, and then you do everything in a one-off and try and like skirt things under, like Emily said, it leads to miscommunications, it leads to a lot of confusions, no one knows the real story. So that's my question for you, I want to know what these changes are that you guys are planning to make, and if you guys are going to continue censoring people. Thank you.
All right, Catherine Chattergun, did I get that right?
Dear Prosper ISD School Board, my name is Catherine Chattergun. I was a twenty nineteen graduate of Prosper High School, and I attended Prosper ISD schools from first through twelfth grade. I'm speaking before you tonight to advocate for the importance of an equitable education. As a student who attended school in a predominantly white school district, and now attends school at a predominantly white institution, it was not until I entered my architectural education in college that I was able to critically think and make connections between my internalized understanding of myself and the world, and the systemic injustices that are foundational to our country, and how they are maintained through policies, practices, and structures. In my primary education in Prosper ISD, equity was not consciously addressed in a manner that I would have liked. And until we come together to dismantle the roots of inequity across different scales and understand the world in a view beyond our own, this behavior will continue to be perpetuated and replicated through what we teach. Teaching and education will be at the front line of understanding unity and creating an equitable world. The uncomfortable conversations that need to happen should be taking place in the classroom from a place of learning. We need an academic framework that addresses the way policies and laws uphold systemic injustice and how foundational social constructs have been and continue to be used as a means of differentiation and exploitation. Teaching how these injustices came to be is the first step towards progress. It's about learning how we ended up where we are and where we can go from there. It is my proposition that Prosper ISD should add a section to their strategic plan for diversity, equity, and inclusion. The transformation towards an equitable and accessible education and world must start with ourselves and our district. Small-scale changes can have the power to influence the whole system. In the next five years, we should strive to diversify the voices within our district as well as develop a decolonized pedagogic model that centers learning with humanity and care. I am happy to assist with this, I helped develop the five-year Equitable School Report for my college. With all things considered, I know these necessary changes towards equity will not take place overnight, but change starts with conversation, and this is why I'm standing here before you today, advocating for the students in Prosper ISD now to have a more inclusive and equitable education than what I had. Education should be an environment of irresistible desire to learn and grow where curiosity is the engine. I'm encouraging Prosper ISD to be on the side of change and to invest time, energy, and resources into developing a framework for learning that emphasizes a new way of seeing, acting, and caring. As long as we leverage collective action and support centered on equity, there's a capacity for change, innovation, and reaching the full potential of a creative education with all voices involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chattergun, thank you for coming up and speaking to us this evening. Thank you all for your public comments. Now we will move into the consent agenda portion of our agenda.
First item on the agenda are the minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions about those minutes? Board update, so we have Mike and Janie Reeves, very close to getting that, as you'll remember, we made a move on that pretty late to get it started, but was by the building the other day, and it looks great, playgrounds are going in, and everything is on point. So we will be in there soon enough, which will be great, soon as the playground is, you know you're in good shape. Mrs. Jerry Bryant, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the town of Prosper did a great job in working with us and making sure that we have that certificate of occupancy. So Ms. Newman and her team have already been over there, starting to prepare and get ready. So you can see the progress in that building. And then now, believe it or not, we already have Elementary School Number Fifteen, which will be located in Star Trail that's starting to hit the board report from Huckabee, to give us where they are on their initial steps, as well as High School Number Three. So I'm excited to see both of those coming online, and soon enough, we'll have buildings going up for both of those locations. So exciting times as we move forward, and certainly more opportunities for our students.
And we did talk about a groundbreaking for Prosper High School Three, even though it's a thousand degrees outside?
Even though it's a thousand degrees outside, we're going to do it.
Okay, fabulous.
We'll get a date on the calendar so we can come out and celebrate.
Good.
Such a monumental moment.
Absolutely.
In history. So we have a consideration on possible approval of the post-legislative student code of conduct and student handbooks. This is very typical, whenever we come out of a legislative session, that there are other pieces that come. And so TASB, which is the Texas Association of School Boards, sent out their update. You can see, I gave you kind of a debrief, as well as the public had the ability to be able to see really what were those changes. Some things with bullying, our Student Health Advisory Council, promotion and retention, which was a big one that came out of Hospital Forty-five Forty-five with star failure, and we've already been working with our administrators, talking about what that looks like moving forward, but certainly now it is in our student handbooks. Any questions about any of those changes?
I didn't have, anybody have any questions with their read?
How long has that been out for parents?
When I posted the agenda on Friday, so, yeah. And I actually reposted all of the handbooks and code of conduct, all of that's out, public, all five hundred-plus pages.
It's a big packet this month.
It's huge.
So every year, we bring to you highlights and our reports from our different curriculum teams, and so wanted to make sure we did make those public as well, and so that everyone had a chance to read through those. Anybody that went out to the Prosper ISD School Board website, wanted to see if you all had any questions. We have some of our directors that are with us this evening, if you do have specific questions. So I just wanted to give you a nice snapshot of everything that's happened for the year in the different areas.
The growth in special ed was crazy, yeah. When will we be in the Haggard facility, when is that going to be?
Oh, in Mayhar?
Mayhar.
Yeah, so we are almost ready to go. We have tile and carpet and paint, and so we're just probably a week or two out. We just needed some of the restrooms completed out. Dr. Hickey and I were in there with her team actually last week, and so we're really excited about it, it looks beautiful. They've done a really nice job. Mr. Roberts, actually, I don't know if he's here tonight, but he texted me wanting to do some special design work on the trim, and I believe he might be in the running for like a Chip Gaines-type situation. He told me he wasn't, though, he's like, I'm not Chip Gaines.
Very good.
It looks great, though, very proud of that facility.
Well, we did get those reports, do we have any comments or questions on those, that they were?
Took a while to read.
Yeah, a lot of wonderful things happening in the district, my goodness.
Yeah, a lot of great things happening.
Great. I'd like to pull 5E out of the consent agenda, and we'll discuss it separately, but I would like to go ahead and get approval on the other four items in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, too.
Okay, Deb Smith, can I second?
I'll second.
Drew Wilburn, all in favor?
Great, okay, so we'll consider 5E separately. So the conversation has got, you know, we've got the live meeting link up, we're live, hello? Now, the question is, how do we provide online comments, what do we need to do? I've talked with the mayor, I think some of us have talked to the people on town council about how that works. And I just wanted to have this conversation about how we feel about that, what do we want to do about that? How do we, how do we make sure that that happens in a way that is not disrupting to our meetings and provides meaningful input to us? Thoughts?
Well, I've thought a lot about this over the last couple of weeks, met with community members and spoken with them, and I'm very grateful that we are able to continue the live feed. I think that was a valuable asset during the past year, and a lot of benefit to many people who weren't able to come to the meeting. So I'm glad we're able to continue that without a break. And it's, talking with people, I do see the value in being able to speak about an agenda item prior to us taking that vote, and how important that is for our community to share their thoughts, again, before we take that vote. So I see how that would be beneficial, and I would love to look into that further, you know, financially, logistically, what does that look like for our district? You know, maybe in the dream world, that someday down the road, maybe even our high school CTE programs, you know, could help save money on that with broadcasting departments or technology and so forth. Lots to consider there. As far as the agenda items that are, I'm sorry, public speaking that are not related to any agenda item, I could say something politically correct here, but I'm just going to speak from the heart. I'm still toying with it, honestly. The last I checked, we have over thirty-five thousand, or around thirty-five thousand voters, registered voters in PISD. And I think one of the things that makes us so special and unique is our sense of community, that we do try to, you know, and continue this year, and to continue to incorporate things to involve the parents in communication more, and keep that small-town feel in our large district. So to be able to see someone in person, have eye contact, have the name-face recognition, to really hear someone's heart when they feel passionately about their concerns, I just think in-person is so valuable. And then also, because transparency is so important, to be able to keep communication throughout the month if someone's unable to come to a meeting, to hear a two-way dialogue versus just the one-way in a public comment section. Definitely very open to thinking about this more and praying, what's best for our district in the world of social media, once you jump out there. We said it's oftentimes hard to rein it back in. But I want to be open-minded, and I want to continue to listen and keep that in mind.
Jan, were you going to say something?
I agree with what Mrs. Dixon is saying. I'm very conflicted as well, because this past year, we've had some situations with students speaking, with comments being made in public session, that, in my opinion, this is my opinion, are somewhat disrespectful, or somewhat just don't need to be aired during a school board meeting. So that is of concern to me. I do like the transparency of, definitely, I feel like we should have, continue the online school board meetings, for sure. I just don't have a good picture in my mind of what that would look like, how we, and maybe we don't, maybe we don't, you know, maybe it's not our place to control what people say publicly where others are hearing that information. But I am conflicted by that, because I know we try to, to somewhat, we want to be transparent, but we also want to uphold the integrity and dignity of others.
Okay. I appreciate what you have to say there, and a couple of thoughts here. First of all, to the gentleman that spoke earlier from Washington State. I think that that's one of my biggest concerns on something like this, is, hey, welcome here, we're so glad that you're here. But we have seen, at least I've seen, some very concerning things in other parts of the country. Things that are going on, things that boards outside of Texas are doing, or groups outside of Texas. And I don't necessarily want somebody calling in from Portland, Oregon, or something like that, or not Portland, just some other place, weighing in on what's going on in Prosper ISD. That could get a lot of good people all riled up about something that truly doesn't need to be riled up, or could be misinformation, that we've also seen this year, that's a concern of mine. I very much appreciate what Mr. Pope had to say this evening about sped parents getting a chance to weigh in on things. That is certainly an area of concern, and I can appreciate that. I did also like what Ms. Kim did. She was here to read a comment on behalf of another individual. I think that that is also important, I think that people that want stuff read, like Mr. Charles did tonight, there is a way to find that out, to find people to do that. We also, as a board, it is important to hear things, and people make their comments publicly. I think that we also very much want interaction, we want to be able to respond to those, which we can't respond. That's why it's important that people are still contacting the district. the district. I received, I guess, two calls on this, on this topic in the past month's time, and that was it. People reached out. I was happy to have the conversation. One of those gentlemen is here in the room tonight. Happy to visit with him about that. So this is something that, like Mr. Bridges has said, we need to consider, but there is constraints. And I just don't want it to be a free fall scenario with everything there. I've also heard, again, this evening, as I did this past month, people talk about the board editing things or censoring stuff, which before we archive things, I know that we absolutely hold the right to do that. If somebody is saying something highly inappropriate and we pull that from it, we will continue to do that.
Absolutely.
However, this side of the room, what we say up here, that is absolutely public comment. And we're not pulling that stuff down from anybody. So, you know, that, I think that that's important to talk about that as well. But if something in this scenario happens moving forward, that will continue to happen.
Good. Other thoughts, comments?
I could say something, but it would just be redundant for the things that have been said. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that's been said, and even with some of the comments that have been shared tonight from public comment. Like Ms. Dixon, I've talked to a couple of PISD residents and kind of heard both sides of it. And like Ms. Thompson, I'm, I'm in the middle. I, I, I really like the fact that we're streaming live. I do. I like that to Mr. Pope's comment, being able to watch it from home, no matter what your situation is, but opening it up for public comment. I have mixed thoughts about it. And I appreciate what Ms. Kim said. She talked about the fear of the unknown and not being guided by the fear of the unknown. And I agree with that. But to what Mr. Beaver said, it's like, once you open it, there you are. So I, I, I really am. I'm in the middle.
Is there a way in which we could do it?
Yeah, that's what I'd like, that's what I'd like to talk about. I mean, I think for me personally, as the presiding officer, I, I want to make sure that we run a board meeting that is free from distraction and that allows us to conduct this very important business in the school district. And we do that in an orderly fashion. And I'm really more interested, I'm certainly interested in hearing from people that live in the district. I know a lot of, you know, we ask for, for people's address when they come up here and speak. We're just trying to validate that we're listening to people that live in the district. That's important to us. I'm not particularly concerned about what somebody from Portland, Oregon has to say about the way we're running our district. But I'd like to explore the option about what could, what, what are the options for us to do that? Where we could maintain a level of integrity in our meeting, allow, see whether there is a way that we could solicit public comments electronically in a way that would allow us to conduct the meeting efficiently and without disruption. And so I think what I'd like to do is have our, ask our fabulous IT department to investigate and maybe to come back to this board at our next meeting and say, hey, this is the way that we recommend or a way you could, you could look at that or maybe not look at it. But I feel like right now, we don't really have the, we have, we have some very broad parameters, at least this narrowed down and see what our options are. And then I think we could come to, as a board and make a decision based on those options. Because I'm, I'm, I'm open to having those comments as well, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't believe I'm governed by fear or ruled by fear, but I have a responsibility to the district to make sure that we're conducting ourselves in a way that takes care of our, of our district and our kids. So I'd like to do that.
Okay, certainly we can do that and ask Mr. Daniel Osco and his team to take that project on. And then certainly get in communication with y'all if there are more specific details that they're needing as they're looking at.
For parameters.
Pricing and moderating and all of those things that I think would be concerns. And you all bring up very valid concerns because we, we're a little bit of a different situation because we do run the risk of a student's name.
Right.
Being involved, which we know is not something that we should be doing. And certainly then having a staff member, just like when you read the public comment, we don't want that. And Mr. Beavers and yourself have brought up a great point. We've seen across the nation what has happened where people are weighing in on other people's school districts. And the one thing that we're very proud of is what we've done in Prosper ISD. We want to do everything we can to protect our students, our staff, and, and the great work that's being done in this district. And I would hate to see someone from another state just decide that they want to demoralize or turn this into something that it isn't for our kids and our staff and parents.
Good.
Mr. Bridges, my only thing, I guess, is I'm just wondering, like tonight before we did public comment publicly or in person, you read some guidelines.
Yes, sir.
My only thought about it is if, would there be guidelines as it relates to the virtual? Because I'm just thinking if there's a parent who, life happens. And so if there's a parent who's right now at softball practice or baseball practice and they want to comment, but there's a ton of noise in the background for three minutes, are we going to allow that? Or just kind of that thing?
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to. We need to establish the parameters for that. And I think we need to, I think, you know, absolutely, I would expect anybody participating virtually to adhere to the same guidelines that we provide to people that are, you know, kind enough to come up here and take time out of their schedule to speak to us in person.
It's an excellent point. We had to do that, too, with students when we moved to that virtual online platform a school was starting. We had to put some norms in place because that was a world we had not engaged in before, knowing what that instructional setting looked like at home for students. So certainly something that we need to think about as we are having our IT team investigate that. And then how does that play out? Because we want to stay true to what we know and the integrity of what we know in Prosper.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to have the ability to shut that comment off if it crosses a line or is offensive. And I think we've got to have the ability to do that. So I think, I think there's a lot of things that we have to, we have to look at. And the other thing is, I don't, I don't think whatever decision we make as a board, let's, let's say we did play this out. And let's say we, the IT department came back and said, hey, here's the way to do that. Here's a system that works for you and that will allow you to, to accomplish these online participation in a way that allows you to have an efficient and effective meeting without disruption. And we do that and we find out that it doesn't work. Or we find out that the comments or the whatever that, we've, we've opened up something that we don't want, or that we can go back to live streaming. I mean, live streaming, a kind of a one-way communication. And if people want to come speak to us, they can come do what they're doing today. So whatever we decide is not in stone. So I think that's why I'm a little, I'm more open to the idea of let's explore what happens. Let's, let's set some firm guidelines on what that's going to look like. And if it works, fabulous. And if it doesn't, then we back it out.
One request that I would also have is to give priority to people in the room.
That's a good point.
I think that we've seen things this year that I haven't loved everything that's been on, but it is important to give the people that have shown up a, a chance to stand there and have their voice heard. So I would, I would ask that.
I think that makes sense.
Priorities given to the room.
I like that.
To that point, Mr. Beavers, and I agree with you. I just, for me, and this is my final comment about the, the topic is, I, I want to see us, however we do this, to encourage or reinforce the idea that this is not the only opportunity that community members have an opportunity to engage with us. That it's, it goes beyond this. And just even if it's not said in this room, it still weighs in on the agenda items. And I just, I don't know how we continue to instill that and enforce that and reinforce it. But I think that that, that narrative and that practice helps.
Good. That's all good. All right. Well, that doesn't require a motion. We're just going to, I think we'll move on to the next agenda item, but we will ask that that appear on our next month's agenda item and we'll learn more about what our options are there. Okay, moving on to business.
So we have our financial investment tax report for June. Ms. Fulmer is making her way.
Good evening. So we're going to look a little bit at the finance, financial position and investments of the district as of June 30th. Our year end is August 31st. So we are very nearing the end. If we look at our investment portfolio at the end of June, at all funds of the district, we have two hundred and twenty, twenty-five million dollars compared to two hundred and nineteen last month. That's a 3.1% increase. If we look at just the general funds, we have one hundred and thirty-three million dollars or fifty-eight, right at 59% of the portfolio just in general funds. Our benchmark performance as of June 30th is 0.06% for just the school district's portfolio, slightly down from prior month. We did have a maturity in the long-term Texas term fixed. Prior month was 11 million. So we had a maturity that came in. So it was reinvested in more liquid funds, but at a lower rate. So we dropped just a little bit on our overall yield. Our days to maturity is still 26 days on the 5 million. So we're looking to reinvest some long-term funds, not too long. We typically do less than one year on those funds, just to get a little bit of higher yield. Investment for the general fund, 136 million dollars, 133, this at the same time prior year, 2.2% decrease from this time prior year, but the same percentage as prior month. So we're really tracking along with no significant changes month to month this year. Revenue by source shifting to revenues and expenditures. Our total revenue for the general fund, current year is 171 million dollars. This time last year, 146. So that's a 17% increase. One thing to note, as we talk about the budget in a little bit, the federal funds on this are the portion of federal funds that are come through general operating fund. So the federal funds that we'll talk about with the ESER funds and those type are different and outside of the general operating fund.
Is that Medicaid reimbursement? Is that what that is?
Yes, yes, exactly. Revenue by source, budgeted revenue for this prior year, 178 million, collected year to date, 171. So percent completed to 96.3%, tracking a little bit behind prior year. If we look at our tax collections, current year, original 16% collected, 99.92, almost 100%. Last year was 103, but we did have a significant ag rollback last year as well. And if we look at our ag rollback collections, year to date, 1.6 million dollars since September. Shifting then to expenditures, we look at the general fund only expenditures year to date, 150, almost 151 million compared to 124 million this time last year, 21% increase overall. And if we look at our expenditures by major object, 192 budgeted, 150 expended, 78.4% complete year to date is right there at the same pace as prior year. So the budget numbers change significantly, but when we look at our percent year to date, you really can see if we're tracking like we have in prior years. If we look at the athletics fund, current year, our cash flow through the year is 116 million dollars, million dollars, please forgive me. That would be exceptional. 116,000 dollars. And our food service fund, cash flow through June 30, 406,000 dollars, significant improvement from prior year where we had to stop operations. So that was an unusual event prior year. Debt service fund, 19.5 million compared to 21.9 prior year. As we know, we build up cash reserve for our August 15th debt payments. At one point in time, we've, was significantly different in the financials from Bryant. We are really catching up as we could see from the pictures, 22.1 million dollars in the pro construction contract, 89.9% of expenditures complete year to date. And we look at Bryant, 22 million dollars expended, 97.2% completed year to date. And that concludes our June 30 presentation.
Ms. Fulmer, I want to ask a real quick question. You said that there had been that increase in the budget. Was that due to our elementary, middle and high school opening this year is why we saw that increase?
This was a significant year for Prosper ISD. We know about our challenges due to external reasons, but the district built up a significant amount of change in this prior year because we opened our second high school, a middle school and an elementary in a single year, the trifecta. It is very difficult. The budget pressure is incredible as we knew when we adopted the budget this time last year as well. And we're going to look at some things in a little bit about how the fund balance was intentionally increased in order for this year to happen. For the staffing and the expenditures when you open a high school in particular with all four grades is you're inefficient with your staffing. You have to have classes for seniors and juniors, but yet they're not going to be full classes yet because the campus is growing into itself. And so those are the kind of things that our budget would, would shift naturally of the opening of the three schools. However, during this current year, it, one of the things that's just still astounds me is we exceeded our pre-COVID enrollment projections by 400 students.
Unbelievable.
That does not happen in anywhere else in the state. Prosper is unique by all the statistics that you would use to measure yourself by. We try to find other school districts that are like Prosper to compare certain metrics by, and they just don't exist. We are unique in very many ways.
It was asked today by a group of educational leaders who said, what are y'all going to do about low enrollment? Well, that's not a problem in Prosper, but I understand you all because the kids didn't show up. I think they came to Prosper.
Maybe came.
There are significant challenges on both sides of that equation. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Ms. Fulmer. I need a motion on six A.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers. Second. Thank you, Jana. All in favor? All right.
Okay, consideration of possible approval on the teacher incentive allotment compensation spending plan. So I wanted to go ahead and bring this to your knowledge and to the public's knowledge. This has been about, and you may start hearing about different school, schools being in different cohort models. And this is all funded by the Texas Education Agency. So it's not money that's coming out of what Ms. Fulmer was discussing. But there, there is a plan and we're actually in what we call cohort E. So we have kind of a long lead to get into this. But right now, we have four teachers in the district who are nationally board certified. That's not something that the state of Texas typically goes after. But our teachers who are coming from other states, many times they've gone through this very intense training and preparation. And that qualifies them for a certain amount of money to be able to be awarded to them. And so Mr. Ray's, her team, the finance team, Ms. Cease, they're all working very closely in order to be able to kind of go through all of those different steps to make sure that when we're looking at the, this plan and looking at the compensation and the spending within it, that we're actually going to be awarding and granting that to teachers that are very deserving, that have reached these high honors. And so it's a great thing, especially for those four teachers that we have currently in the district who have come from different states who already have that certification. And I was actually visiting with one about that whole process. And she was saying that how invaluable that whole process was to be nationally board certified, that she had learned more than she had ever learned in any time in her educational career. So you can see the spending plan that we have again. But the key thing is, is that that's coming through the Texas Education Agency. They're actually funding this.
And that's like 2024? Is that what I saw?
Yes, you are correct.
So it's a ways away.
Yep. So we'll just keep, but we'll keep bringing updates to you so that you all know what's going on with the, it's called the TIA.
And we need a motion to approve that spending plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, second. Any questions on that? Okay. All in favor? Great. Is it time for Mr. Witt?
I do believe it is. It's an exciting moment. Mr. Witt, join us.
Well, it's good to be back. We appreciate the opportunity. We do have a presentation. We spent some time with the finance committee with some of the details and spreadsheets and so forth. And tonight we have a, a presentation that summarizes where we are. So here on the first graph, the bottom right corner is where we are with respect to a national index of interest rates called the bond buyers index. So we're currently at 2.04%. The record low was in August of 2020 at 2.02%. We have been down at the bottom for some time now and we're back down to near record low levels. The average runs across the middle in blue at 4.13%. So there's a substantial difference between the high end and the low end and the average. When you look back at the bottom left corner, it dates back to January 2001, which is a pretty modern history of interest rates. The high occurred in October of 2008 at 6%. So the good news is that in our financial market, we are borrowing money at the lowest possible rate. There are challenges for all your other team members with respect to supply chains and construction and so forth. But on our side, our bond model is really, really moving well. And so when we go through this, of course, in 2007, we've completed that authorization of 710 million. You look down at the bottom, at the 2019 bond election, a billion 337 was authorized by the voters. We sold 50 million in 2019 as series A and a combination with that, a variable rate soft put, short-term interest rate bond that's very beneficial for a bond model for a district that's growing as fast as you are. We would consider We would consider doing some more of those, except we're at the bottom of the market. So the next time we come before you, it would not be, it would probably likely that we will be talking about the soft-put like we did with Series 2019B. Then in 2020, we issued 55 million, that was a smaller issuance. And then it followed in 2021 early with 50 million. So it's real hard to kind of put our minds around our issuing schedule, but if you look up here in 2007, in 2017 is when we started issuing of more size, 125 million, followed the next year by 200 million, followed by in 2019, 200 million, but then we got into the 2019 bond election. So if you just add it up by calendar year, that was 300 million of issuance in the calendar year 2019. I kind of group them mentally, though, that the 50, the 50, and the 55, and the following 50 are more kind of, even though they cover two calendar years, is kind of that follow-up issuance to the 200 million in 2019. We purposefully delayed some of the issuance in 2020 to see how we come out on the other side of the COVID. And with that, your tax base continued to skyrocket. Your student count continued to skyrocket, and your need for facilities continued. Our cost of money declined, and our bond model allows for us to move forward with a pretty steady issuance of bonds. So the upcoming projects and timeframe, now, we were here not too long ago, and we were talking about 50 million less. We've added 50 million to it in the line item of land and elementary school number 18. We've brought that back. When you look at the timeframe, opening 18 and 24, along with middle school number five and high school number three, this will be another of those trifectas that you have coming your way. And so you continue on your opening of 13 and 14 and 21, 15 and 22, 16, 17, and 23, and 18 and 24. When you add all of that up, because you're committing to those contracts and that plan basically today, I have to prove up that we have the wherewithal to issue those bonds to complete that construction. And that's the challenge, we've got, we have to commit to the construction, but what happens to our tax base over the next several years? And so that's the challenge that we have in this fast-growth school district. So to make a long story short here, we take you through number 18, number five, number three, and some additional money for land. And that's about 545 million, of which we need 500 million of new bonds. But that includes the January 2021 issuance in that number. So with that, what is our tax base doing? You can look there at the second bullet point, your five-year average taxable value growth has been at a billion five. The high number's been a billion seven, the low number in the past five years, a billion one. Last year, you grew at a billion two. You have a preliminary value of a billion five. We will soon have certified value. So with your authorization to proceed tonight with the next issuance of bonds, we will get a certified value at the end of July, and then we will sell that amount of bond shortly thereafter. The preliminary value is a billion five.
Was that always, has that always been the target that we were hoping to get to sustain the growth, was a billion five?
Well, technically, it was about a billion one of growth for 100 million of issuance. And if you, so if I look on average, you're growing at a billion five, I can put a number to that. Let's call it 150 million per year. The reality is, from a facility standpoint, you need to issue 200 million a year. That's the reality. But we have to stay financially secure.
We do.
Financially feasible within our bond model. And so there's always this challenge for us to make sure that we're staying on target, but yet you need additional facilities sooner rather than later. So with that, the number of a billion five, we are hoping is conservative. And so I'll show you in just a moment what we need to absorb getting through high school number three, middle school number five, and elementary number 18. It's in the same numbers that you're looking at here, we're right on target. Just as we, last time we were here, we put the number at 50 million less. It would not surprise me if the next time we come to you, we free up some more capacity to move forward. We just want to do it methodically, so we don't get out in front of ourselves. I mean, you can look at markets today, right? So there's a massive sell-off in the market, there's concerns about additional COVID troubles in the economy, you name it. There are hurdles out there.
Right.
That we're going to have to navigate. And so it's all good right now. The story that you have, as Annette mentioned, is unusual. The speed and pace with which your tax base and student count grew post-COVID. But just know that it may trend like that for the next 10 years, but we need to be prepared if it doesn't.
I agree.
So with that, that's your taxable value numbers. Your INS fund balance is a part of our bond model, it's very healthy, it's grown a little bit on purpose. It's also a part of the use. So if you see a budget that sells and issues bonds and uses that INS fund balance, it's purposeful, and it's not going to be drawn down to any level that we're uncomfortable with. So it is a part of the program. So the summary of the plan of finance is shown here. The 50 million that we issued in January of 2021, you already approved that, we already sold that. We're here tonight for 200 million, followed by a placeholder for 150 million and 100 million. Again, those issuance take you through all of the construction that you've committed to, with reasonable assumptions about your tax base, growth, and conservative assumptions about the interest rate. Okay, so we're using 2.85 for this issuance. We're going to be below that. We use 3% and 3.25 for the 22 and the 23, likely to be below that. So we think we have some conservatism in that. There's a refinancing out there, y'all have been in the market doing refundings before, where we lower the borrowing cost of existing bonds. There's another one out there, it has a 2025 call date, so a little early to get to that one, but that will also aid the model. And so if we come back to you and say we borrowed at 2%, and then we refinance another one and save money, and your tax base grew at a billion seven rather than a billion five, and we need to free up some money to get to the next priority that y'all set with construction, that's the game plan, that's how we want it to go.
Good.
So with that, we're at 50 cents, no change in the tax rate. These are fixed-rate bonds that we're planning, there will be some soft-put variable rate bonds in the future as part of the subsequent issuance. And then down at the bottom is, to your question, what do we need to absorb this? We need 5.4 billion worth of growth, 1.5 billion over two years, followed by a billion two, or 1.8 billion over a three-year period. It's a three-year issuance schedule, so the higher and closer we are to a billion eight, and the lower we are below the interest assumptions that we have, the better the model works. But with that said, on your average and low levels of growth, we're still in good shape with respect to the sale and issuance of the bonds. The pictures of the buildings look far better than my coral snake graphs. But this is what my side looks like, is charts and graphs and so forth. But it shows that we add, kind of layer on each and every year, producing a flat profile right above 80 million. And it shows the 16.4 billion of tax base that we need to get there to support that 81 million of payments of principal and interest. And then you get somewhere out there in 2050, there's a fade. Anyone can guess when is your build-out? But these bond models are not static, they're dynamic. I've been in situations where we're pressing and pressing to get the facilities as fast as we can. And then you reach a certain level where we're no longer there, and then things start to fade, and you start feeling like no pressure bond model, but we're not anywhere close to that in this district. So with that, here's the schedule. We're here tonight for your authorization. We'll receive the certified value July 26, we'll be in the market the first week of August. And then with that, sell and issuance of the bonds. We send the documents to the Attorney General's Office for their review. Once they give us the approval, then we set a closing date on September 1st for the money to enter into your construction fund, and you'll have a new investment report with that 200 million in there being spent timely as you proceed forward with number three, number five, and the other elementary schools. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have about where we stand with the bond model and our game plan, plan of finance with respect to the construction that you all are looking at.
Any questions for Doug?
You all have been meeting with the subcommittee, the finance subcommittee.
Absolutely.
I'll review to all of this.
Absolutely. And we're just talking about the 200 million tonight, that's all we're looking at tonight?
Yes, it is. We, in the order, put a bigger number in case there's a last-minute emergency. It's just there, our intent is to issue 200 million. We would come back to you if that game plan changed. And then we'll be back sometime for a review with the finance committee between now and next year. And then if we're on schedule, next year about this time, we'll be doing at least 150 million, if not more. But you'll have periodic updates as to where we stand with respect to that.
Okay.
Mr. Witt, I just want to publicly say thank you. I've been watching you for years in Prosper ISD, and I just, being able to sit with you on these finance subcommittees and see your work behind the scenes with Ms. Fulmer, it's absolutely outstanding, your level of commitment to Prosper ISD. And so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
On behalf of the students, staff, and parents, a lot of sense of peace when we know that you're involved, so thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely right, thank you, Doug. Okay, requires a motion to, I'll read it. All matters incident related to the issuance and sale of Prosper ISD unlimited tax school building bonds, including the adoption or order authorizing the issuance of the bonds, establishing parameters for the sale and issuance of the bonds, and delegating certain matters to district officers to act on its behalf in selling the bonds. Again, we're talking about a 200 million issuance. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilburn.
I'll second.
I think, Mr. Beavers, all in favor? Okay, very good.
Very good, so, next one is 6D, and I owe the audience an apology. This was a one-page document with very minimal changes in comparison to the hundreds of pages. So I will make this a public document, because that's all that needed to happen, is just a click of a button. It's a small, minimal change, because at the end of the day, what we were prepping for is being able to not just box in public comment at the beginning of the meeting and the beginning only. This would give the board latitude to be able to address certain specific agenda items. So there was no hidden anything, that was my fault, so my apology that I didn't click on that. And this evening, I will make that public, so all of you can review it. But it's pretty minimal at best, and it was going to provide more flexibility and ability for you as a board. And especially if we move into having public comment through a virtual link, we wouldn't be able to just necessarily handle those only at the beginning, because they would be coming in throughout the entire meeting. And so this would allow us to be able to plug those in as agenda items came up. Mr. Crownover, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
You covered it beautifully, that's very nice.
Beautifully, yeah, so we're striking that one.
I was about to, so just so I'm clear, the community has not seen that one line, the one red line.
It's the one sentence that has a red line here, which is that public comment won't just be held at the very beginning of the meeting, that it could happen with, you know, a level of...
But the intent is, so, yes, so public comment shall occur at the beginning of the meeting, we're striking that. But the intent is, I still want us to have public comment related to agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. And if there are unrelated public comments to an agenda item, then we will most likely move those to right before we go into executive session. Does that make sense? Okay.
So you're going to, you're going to post this entire document? Is that what you're saying?
It'll have the one paragraph that you have, on the one sentence.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve 6D.
I'll make a motion to it first.
Thank you, Deb.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jana Hall, in favor? Very good.
Okay, so we're going to have Ms. Fulmer, this is an exciting time, because she's going to talk about future budget.
Thank you very much. So this was a legislative year, as we know, the legislature, two years ago, enacted House Bill 3, which we know did not do Prosper ISD any favors. It was very hard on fast-growth districts, moving to current-year values. And the formulas did not work in our favor, we spoke a little bit last month about that. Our deficit was increasing. And in this session, really at the last minute, the legislature did make some significant changes that benefited fast-growth districts like Prosper ISD. And I'll show you a little bit about what that looks like. But we do have, I know that the budget picture that you will see in here is more favorable than what we were looking at and estimating even last year. So we're very excited about the opportunity in here to meet the district's needs, but also have some reserve for future growth as well. If we look at the general operating fund, this is a little quick side-by-side with some of the basic things that are in the budget model here for us. Our budgeted enrollment is 21,700, and prior year budget was 1903, our actuals was 19708. And some of the things too to remember, so we have a budgeted metrics, but then our actuals are always different. They'll be different, and Prosper, they'll always exceed projections for enrollment. But then you have your current projections, and so we're always looking at those kinds of metrics, because the budget might change from adopted to adopted, but then you have your ending budget. We're going to look this next month, in August, close of the fiscal year, with budget amendments. And that, it's the final amendment for the year, but that's because it's going to true up everything to the actual. So just want to say that a little bit while we're digging into next year as we go. The ADA that we're projecting for next year, average daily attendance, is 20,408. And that's a very high attendance rate. We do, we are conservative on that rate as well, about 95.5%, but our actual ADA is in the 96, 97% range. Actuals was 18,556 for this last year, and our budget was 18,21. So the enrollment increase is a 10% increase over prior year. Now, the increase in itself is getting smaller and smaller because our base is much bigger. But in terms of actual number of students and the need for elementary schools, 2,000 students is always 2,000 students, even if the percent is less. Yes, very much. Property valuation, and this is preliminary values, we should be getting our certified values at the end of this week or the beginning of next week, and those are going to be very important for our budget and our bond model. 11.6 billion preliminary certified compared to 10.2 billion prior year. If you remember, prior year, our certified values really came in two steps. They were not ready in July because of COVID. We really didn't have that at budget adoption. It wasn't until October that you had your real certified values. And so this comparison, I think, is a little bit off because of what occurred last year with those values. 1.3 to really 1.4 billion increase, we just saw 1.5 billion. These metrics are the ones I'm using for the general operating budget. We do have freeze values on top of this that factor in, and Mr. Witt has to calculate those differently for his bond model than we do for general operating funds. Just suffice it to say that we're all using the same valuation information. Percent increase on that is 13.5%. You can see the split between Collin and Denton Counties. The majority of our valuation is in Collin County. In the Denton, we have 1.92 million valuation, 9.7 billion for Collin with the estimate of 11.6. This is just a visual representation of how Prosper has changed in valuation since 1718. You see the percent increases, it's 25% going from 1718 to 1819, 21%, and then 12 and 13. But if you look down at the bottom, the real totals there are right in line with Mr. Witt's presentation. 1.5 billion, 1.511, and 1.3 to 1.4. Looking at our enrollment, this chart just really isn't complete if you look at this for just four years out. I really had to put a long runway on here to understand how Prosper ISD has changed and where the energy has gone. A lot of the times, we talk about budget in sort of a very flat numerical context, but the, it represents resources in a district, and when you see the amount of growth that we have, we understand that regardless of the numbers, the resources and the energy have gone to increasing our capacity and managing this growth with outstanding results. 21, 22, our estimate, 21,700, that's a growth of 2,000 students from prior year. That is most likely a conservative number, but our demographers have deemed it so. 2,600 growth in '22, '23, then 2,400, and then 2,200. And so that's their projection through '24, '25. If we look a little bit about our maintenance and operations tax rate, a very stable tax rate in Prosper ISD. 1819, that was when House Bill 3 kicked in with tax rate compression, which we weren't really sure what that was going to look like. The math on that was very different than what we'd seen in prior years. 1.06 in 1920 was our MNO tax rate. 1.06 in 1920 was our MNO tax rate, 99.27 this year that's just ending. We will not know what TEA dictates our tax rate to be until after certified values. And also, because they have to compare the values of all the districts in the entire state, because they can only be so far apart from each other. So, when they receive all the information, TEA will tell us what our compressed rate is in August. We look at our state funding as a percent of our total revenue. We know that it's going up because of tax rate compression. And also, this year, because of the fast-growth allotment, which we'll go into detail in a little bit. So, looking at next year's budget, it goes from 35% to 39% overall. And that's a very positive sign. With fast-growth districts, districts that their values were increasing rapidly, we saw a steep decline, especially statewide, where the local taxpayers were bearing the burden of education, and the state's portion was going down significantly. Looking at our revenue by source, our local revenue, our prior year, 111 million. Projections are 122 million for next year, a net change of $10 million. State funding, 59 million. Look at the increase. This is the fast-growth allotment. Some of it is growth, but most of it is a fast-growth allotment. $19 million change from prior year. We look at our local federal, I'm gonna call it local federal funding. We currently, we typically budget 700,000 to be conservative. This current year, we brought in 1.1 million. I'm sticking with our conservative budget projection of 700,000 for overall increase of 28.8 million for the entire. And that 28.8 net change goes towards increases in the budget then for expenditures that we have for growth and existing employees. Additional revenue that the fast-growth allotment added is 11.6 million with a holdback for enrollment fluctuations. I mentioned that just very briefly when we spoke last time about this. The fast-growth allotment is a six-year rolling number. It's not an average. It's the enrollment number for the past six years. And so, if you get any fluctuation in a single year, it is such a significant portion of our revenue, it could be a significant increase. And we might have to have budget cuts because of an enrollment dip in a single year. That's not what you want for stability and being able to grow our schools. So, this revenue picture does have a holdback in it of that allotment, so that if we have a dip, we are gonna be able to weather that storm and not have a, a budget fluctuation. That was very exciting. I haven't had the legislature give a district enough to meet our needs and also plan for the future. Those two just never happened, and it was just so heartening to see that. If we switch a little bit to the federal funds, these are gonna be accounted for outside of the general fund. They are not in the general fund budget, but they do have a big impact on it. The federal application and expenditure guidelines apply to these SRR funds. That's significant, because if there are things that we're currently doing that have been bid out or we're using cooperatives, we may not be able to use the federal funds for these things that are very standard and routine unless they're bid in the way that the federal government prescribes. So, everything has to be looked at, whether you're buying a pencil or whether you're hiring employees, in a, with a very different lens. And so, the process might be, might just take longer to get ramped up so that we can start using the funds to benefit children. The SRR2 allocation, our first version of SRR, SRR3, forgive me, was 495,000. That was significantly less than a lot of the districts in the state of Texas. And so, what the legislature did, they came through, they said, there's gonna be a minimum amount that all districts statewide can benefit from the SRR funds. That has resulted in the $6 million to Prosper ISD for each of the next two years, $12 million total. So, that's very good news for the students and for what the district will be able to do for our students that have gaps with SRR and COVID and those types of programs that we could put together. It is a supplant, supplement versus supplant is something that we look at with federal funds sometimes. There's a restriction that you can only use it to add on to expenses from the general fund. These don't have limitations. You are able to actually use it for things you would have spent general funds on, or you can use them to be supplemental. It's at the district's discretion. SRR2 allocation was relatively small, $220,000. If we receive ADA hold harmless for this last year, then they will use our SRR2 funds to compensate us for those. So, that's gonna be a flow through to the district, so we're not gonna see additional fundings from SRR2 specifically. I know that's a lot of acronyms. It's taken me a lot of time to understand. There have been a lot of these, the federal funds that have come out over the past year and a half, really. And their use goes all the way back to March of '20 typically. But Prosper ISD is really looking at using these funds in a very forward-looking manner. Okay, more numbers. There's a lot going on here. What we're doing with this one is we're really looking at, this is just the revenue piece. We're looking at our budget for last year, our actuals, which is on the financials that we just talked about, the projections for where we're gonna be at August 31st, and then a comparison of that to where we're projecting for next year. And so, this is a very good tool for us to see how we're trending with our budget projections compared to what's actually happening, and then did we, did we use that to make adjustments for our budget for the next year. So, we budget $101 million in local revenue. Because of the certified value changes, our actual collections were $107 million. That was not conservative budgeting. That was just the timing of setting the value, the budget versus the certified values because of COVID. New law projections are $117 million. That's before certified values. So, those may change when we look at this next time. We really maintain a very stable outlook on our prior period tax collections. Those really don't change very much. And our local revenue is down a little bit. We've talked about over a million dollars of reductions just in interest earnings. So, that's where that is reducing our revenue projections. State revenue is going up to $58 million. We look at state revenue, we budgeted 61.5 at the beginning of last year. We're really looking for our projected to be right at 59 million. So, the reason that it would be less than budget is because the tax collections are higher than budget. And in the state funding formulas, your tax revenue and your state revenue are really a seesaw. If you're bringing additional tax, then your state funding goes down. And so, those mechanisms offset each other. So, it's very natural, if you have higher tax collections, to see reduced state funding. Our federal revenues, you can see we budgeted prior year 700,000. We're doing the same for budget this next year. We talked about our enrollment projections. We're looking at WADA. WADA is our weighted average daily attendance. That's a state funding template metric. It includes your enrollment ADA plus all of your special populations. You get weighted, every student is weighted a little bit by their special population group as far as the funding formulas are concerned, for instance, like bilingual, gifted and talented, those kinds of things, and then that translates to WADA. So, that's really a funding number that we're gonna see. 201.2 million dollars of budget projections total, including the athletics fund. We're keeping that revenue projection the same as we did prior year. And our TRS on behalf, that is a book entry that we make, our revenues equal our expenditures, so it does not affect our operations at all. 10.2 million dollars of on behalf for a total budget of just under $212 million for general operating next year. Okay, this one isn't as long. There's not as much to look at on this one. If we look at our budget for our payroll projections, current salaries budgeted for prior year, 153.3 million. We have our actuals current year, and our projected, a little bit less than what we budgeted. That's very natural. We budget for 100% of payroll, and we have a factor in there for our health benefits that people are gonna take. So, your actuals are always gonna be in there, but because of vacancies and such typically, our payroll expenditures will not be 100% of budget, and that's expected. So, that's a good thing. We also tried to look at that and use our current year actuals to lower our projections for what those payroll, that payroll would be if we had made no changes for next year. So, our current salaries and benefits for next year budget is 152,273. New positions for growth. Remember, this year, we're opening two elementary schools, which for Prosper seems like not as heavy a lift as opening high school, middle school, and elementary in a single year, but it's a significant hit to the budget in terms of staffing and operations as well. So, what, 16.1 million, new positions district-wide, not just for the two new schools, that's district-wide. And compensation. We'll have another slide where we talk a little bit more about what compensation looks like, but this number is almost double from what it was when we looked at last month because of the fast-growth allotment. So, that is very exciting news. 176 million dollar projected for next year with payroll. The non-payroll projections not changing significantly, 33.7 million. And remember too, one of the things that's in that non-payroll are things like electricity and water and fuel, operations for the district, property casualty insurance for our new facilities as well. 209.9, 536,000 athletics trending, just like we had budgeted prior year, the 10.2 TRS on behalf. So, we're looking at 220 million point seven expenditures, budgeted deficit of 8.7 million dollars. When we last spoke, we were at 16 million, and unfortunately, we were excited to have gotten it down to 16 million. So, the fast-growth allotment have enabled us to really ramp up compensation increases and lower the deficit at the same time. Looking at fund balance projections, so, all of these things, we talked about the board purposefully and very intentionally increasing fund balance, knowing that we were going to need to draw down from fund balance to open the three schools at once. Our estimated ending fund balance right now is right at $87 million. That is 47% of expenditures for last year. That metric is very strong. Recently met last week with the rating agencies for our upcoming bond issue, and they were very impressed with the, our fast growth, and yet we would still have 47% estimated fund balance. And so, that is, is a very strong, it doesn't happen by accident. It was intentionally done, and so appreciated. This number includes the drawdown for the capital outlay and our residential notes payable. So, those have already been deducted from that number. So, that number doesn't have to have those taken off the top. Talk a little bit about compensation. So, salary increases for current staff, 4.1 million dollars. And then additional increase to the teacher pay scale, 3.6 million dollars. And I noted that very specifically. So, there are various employee groups that their compensation is based on the teacher pay scale. Most typically, teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians. There's some other employee groups as well, but that's the one that the teacher pay scale affects. So, 3.6 million dollars just focused at the teacher pay scale. So, that's a significant boost to our ability to retain and recruit the best teachers for Prosper ISD. New personnel costs, we've already seen that at 16.1 million. So, the total there is 23.9 million. So, that concludes our budget presentation for the Maintenance and Operations Fund and the SRR federal programs. If we look a little bit about the Interest and Sinking Fund, this is what funds the debt payments on the bonds that we just talked about. We will issue, for instance, 200 million dollars of bonds, and we will have annual debt payments that are funded with a tax rate that is labeled specifically just to retire debt. If we look at our current payment schedule, what does not include any issuance that's coming up that we spoke about tonight, our current payment schedule has us at 58.5 million dollars. And current, it was 56. It was higher than that, but the board approved a refunding current year, which lowered our current year payment, which puts money into fund balance that can be used for debt going forward. We'll look at our debt tax rate. We have a very stable debt tax rate. The state has a cap of 50 cents for INS funds, and so, that's the constraint that Mr. Witt spoke about earlier, is your debt capacity. And then he has to prove to the state that with our, within our constraints of our tax rate and our growth, can we make the payments on the debt? So, I know there's a lot of acronyms that go around, but that's really what it boils down to, is your tax collections for your annual debt service. If we look at our debt structure, with the proposed, and of course, these were estimates. We don't have our certified value set. But with our estimates in Mr. Witt's forecast, if we look at the pending bond sale, we would have 65.4 million dollars approximately of annual debt service. Our tax collections, 61.8. And then, our total collections for debt would be 62.2. So, that would, the use of INS fund balance would be around $3 million. And so, that would be intentional and a very purposeful use of INS fund balance. The other fund that the board is required to adopt every year, there are three funds, is the Child Nutrition Fund. This is a federal fund. I know a lot of people forget that the child nutrition is a federal fund, even though our secondary schools are not on the federal lunch program. It's still encapsulated within this federal guidelines and is oversight by the Texas Department of Agriculture. So, we're switching providers this year. Our local lunch and breakfast program budget is gonna be 6.6 million. State and federal reimbursements, 712,000 dollars. Revenue projections of 7.3, their expenditures are 7.1 estimate. So, they're estimating approximately $263,000 of surplus from operations. So, the next steps from here, this is a very compressed next four weeks as far as ending the current year, doing budget amendments. We're gonna get our certified values, our district's July 25th, that's in statute. TEA will certify our compressed tax rate by August 5th. Very quickly after that, we'll have the public notice put out with the tax rate that TEA has available for us. August 23rd is our public hearing on our budget adoption. That's the fourth Monday. And I very much appreciate moving it to the fourth Monday to accommodate the compressed window for publication for the tax rate notice. And one thing too, I wanted to slint shot us into September, that's when we'll adopt the tax rate. And also, budget amendments for the first report, one of the new elements in our first report, which stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, is your revenue projections. And so, for a super fast-growth district like Prosper, we may need to amend our budget, our revenue budget in October or September, in order to put us in a good place for the first report. So, just wanted to bring that up very early. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Annette. Any questions for, we have no action. We do that in next month's meeting, correct?
That's correct, no action.
We, we just need action on the resolution, correct, for compensation?
I don't think, is that the next one?
I believe so.
Yes, 6, so there are no budget amendments, obviously.
No, no budget amendments this time.
But 6F.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Fulmer, it's so good to see you giddy.
Giddy. Giddy, fabulous. Okay, we have, we have the resolution of the Board of Trustees around the, do you want to talk about what that is? Dr. Ferguson?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we're very proud of in Prosper, we're adding in 450 new employees right now at this current moment, as we're bringing in our new hire sessions. And one of the things we talk to them about are the things that make Prosper ISD so very special and a great place to work. And that has to do with each of you and your commitment to our employees and the way that they're treated and taken care of and cared for each and every day in our district, whether it's their benefits package or if it's through their compensation. And so, we want to certainly be able to take care of them at those very dire moments sometimes, just like what you all did with COVID last year, being able to give them that additional $1,000 to be able to get the school year started, because you were sensitive to the fact that some of them, their spouses possibly, had lost jobs, and they may need that money. Or as we rolled into the holidays and knowing that they needed to buy things for their own families for the holidays, and you all once again came to the table and to the front and said, we'll take care of them in that way. And as I tell all of our new employees, I've never heard a teacher turn down money. Because we're not, we're not bankrolling, right, as we know. But they certainly, we're so blessed and so fortunate in Prosper ISD to have educators who are truly doing this, because it is a passion. They come to this district because of the high level of professionalism and quality that we provide, and they want to come learn from the best educated educators. that we provide, and they want to come learn from the best educators. And we get the best educators because of seven people like yourself who are committed to making sure that we have the ability to be able to go out there and get the absolute best. And certainly, we have amazing districts around us, and we are in the fight. I have conversations with superintendents around us, and we're usually fighting over how dare you take this person, right, the back and forth. But we know we're fighting out over good people for public education, and we want the best in Prosper for our kids, and compensation certainly helps. And Ms. Fulmer's done an excellent job. We sat down for quite a bit of time in June, really looking at comparison districts, where were they, and then how were we going to beat them? So that we could come to the table, and thankfully, because of House Bill fifteen twenty-five and what happened in the eighty-seventh legislative session, we're able to do some things to really recruit and then retain through the funding that we've received. And then also, just some amazing work by our staff on really how do we get this budget under control? Because as she said, we were thinking we were looking at a sixteen million dollar deficit. So there was a lot of work behind the scenes from the business office administrators, really trying to figure out, how do we squeeze this down? And the great news is, we did that great work without impacting the classroom, and then we were given this wonderful, wonderful surprise, our legislators. So we're asking that you approve that so we can continue to make magic happen in Prosper ISD for our students and staff.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Second, thank you, Deana. All in favor? Okay, very good. And you'll talk to us as those milestone dates approach, right? Make sure I know that's what's happening.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, no doubt.
Good, good, good.
Those are good, good moments, for sure.
Yep. Okay, we also have a resolution. We have two resolutions in a meeting, which is unusual. This is a resolution that you saw in your packet about aligning ourselves with the three-eighty bypass project with what the, we have a resolution, I don't have the language in front of me, but I wouldn't read it anyway, it's in the packet. Basically where we've said that the, okay. Resolve, the Board of Trustees of Prosper Defense School District hereby joins the town of Prosper in supporting U.S. Highway three A as a controlled access highway, strongly opposing the consideration of the new gold or brown alternative segment B alignments as presented by text documents, U.S. three-eighty EIS schematic, thirty percent design submitted to the town on May third, twenty-twenty-one. So that is a resolution that requires a vote. Do I have a motion to support that?
This is much like the resolution that we made three years ago.
Yes, yes.
Same thing.
We're really in favor. That's fine, the expansion of three-eighty, but what we don't want are these major highways cutting through the middle of our district. Right now, all of the plans that they're showing us, it does not cut through any of the land that we've acquired or any of our facilities, but we have to think about the health and safety of our students who would be traveling on these major expressways. And then you also have to think about the financial impact with the tax base, because once you get a superhighway going, no one's building a business underneath that if there's no access to get there. So we have to think about all of those aspects and how that could impact us financially, but most importantly, the health and safety of our kids.
Great. I'll make a motion then to approve. Thank you, Mr. Bieber. Second. Okay, thank you, Deb. All in favor? All right, very good.
And then we have a consideration on six H. For the resolution between Prosper ISD and DIR Shared Technology Services.
It was in our packet as well. Any questions on that? Okay, well then I'll entertain a motion for that resolution, three resolutions. Let's roll record.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor? All right. Great. With that, am I right, it's time to move into executive session?
Yes, sir.
I will entertain a motion for executive session.
Motion.
Bill, second. Deb, all in favor? All right, we will go into executive session. We will talk about contract stuff, land stuff, and we will come back out with any decisions that we make regarding resignations and hiring. Thank you all.
We're 9:46. We are back from executive session. We have several action items that we need to complete. We need a motion to accept resignations.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations.
Okay, Dev, a second. All right. Thank you, Deana. All in favor? Great. We need a motion to accept all the -- is it new hires or conditional new hires? Or is it new hires?
Just hires.
Just hires. Okay. All right. Jenna?
Second.
Second bill. All in favor? Good. Okay. Another motion. Needs to make this motion.
It's on the read.
Crown over motion.
I move that the board accrete a payment of $450,000 to Tres Capital-related decreasement access near Reeves Elementary School.
All right. Second. We got a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Move to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. Second. All in favor? Good night.